Everyone, I'm going to call the October 4th City of Issaquah Council meeting to order. And due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting is being held entirely remotely this evening. At this point, we'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members in attendance, so please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichele.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Thanks. Council President Hunt?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
Great. And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. All seven of our council members are in attendance this evening. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, but can you please keep your microphones muted? Thank you. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." The next item on our agenda this evening is a special business item. It's ID 0965, and it's the King County Issaquah Recovery Center update. And I'd like to invite King County Department of Community and Human Services Director Leo Flor to provide a brief overview on the use of the former Issaquah Holiday Inn. Leo?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Again, my name is Leo Flor, and I have the privilege of directing King County's Department of Community and Human Services. And I'm here tonight briefly to say thank you. Thank you to the city of Issaquah. Thank you to you, Madam Mayor, and to this council. One of the privileges I've had over the last eighteen or nineteen months now is overseeing with our public health partners the administration of our county's isolation and quarantine system for persons who don't have the ability to, or a home of their own in which to isolate or quarantine. And this has been a really successful part of our countywide response, which has been also a really successful, I think, the stats are out there, but they make me proud every time I say them, that as a county and as a region, we've had the lowest rate of both COVID illness and COVID death of any major metropolitan area on the continental United States. And I don't attribute that all to our isolation and quarantine system, but particularly for folks who don't have access to a home of their own, this was a key part of it. So on behalf of King County Executive Dow Constantine, on behalf of our public health, Seattle King County Director Dennis Worsham, and certainly on behalf of my own department, I wanted to say thank you and share a couple of quick stats, just in case folks wanted to know just how much of an impact the hotel in Issaquah had. So to date, we've provided isolation and quarantine for 2,900 folks who have not had the ability to do that in a home of their own. And of, and that's across the entire system. There were, at the peak of the system, five different facilities that were operating, but none has done more than the Issaquah facility. In the city of Issaquah, we had 2,057 total guests over the course of seventeen months, so more than two-thirds of all folks who isolated or quarantined in a facility run by King County did it in Issaquah. Of the folks who stayed, certainly there were a high number of folks who were unsheltered, so seventy-three percent of persons who received isolation and quarantine were homeless, but thirty-seven had homes. And in many cases, in either case, it was the fact that they didn't have a place where they could be by themselves and not put other people at risk, or they might not have given had a home, that really made this important. The average stay was about 7.8 days, and it was at the Issaquah facility where we really learned how to work better with our guests so that they would be able to stay all the way to the end of their medically required period of isolation and quarantine, and we saw the highest rate of success of that at the Issaquah Hotel. We also like to joke that we even had a bobcat show up at one point at the Issaquah Hotel. We found it under a bush, and it was next to an empty can of Red Bull, although I'm not ready to say that it consumed the Red Bull itself. And so there were a lot of neat stories and statistics. This is intended to be brief, and so what I really, and we have now concluded our use of the hotel, and we have ended the lease. I believe it is back with its owners for whatever future use they will have. And I just wanted to, Mayor Polley, there were a couple of occasions where I had to give you a phone call and ask a question or give you an update, but at every turn, our staff, and certainly it was my experience, that the city of Issaquah was a welcoming place. It helped us help thousands of people in a once-in-a-generation pandemic, and it is my pleasure, on behalf of all of King County, to thank you for playing host to this facility that could not have been more important. We're still doing this work, but the numbers are much lower now, and I'm grateful for the chance to come here and express King County's gratitude to the city of Issaquah.
Well, thank you, Leo. Just appreciate, again, you taking the time to come and share the information, the statistics, and sort of the scope and scale of what's accomplished here. We were excited to work with King County. You were amazingly responsive. You felt very free to call me whenever you wanted, evening or early morning, and that was great, because you kept me in the loop, and it really felt like a strong partnership. I also want to thank Eastside Fire and Rescue and our police department as well for just rounding out all of the folks and teams that were involved. So thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing this with the council and our community. It was great. Have a great night. The next item of business this evening is audience comments, and for those of you who have submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. For those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or star phone, look for a hand icon, and this can vary by device. One option may go to, be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. We're also going to have two public hearings tonight on AB 8198, the proposed 2022 budget and salary ordinance, and AB 8199, the proposed 2022 budget levy and revenue sources. Comments on these topics must be made under the public hearings that will be occurring later in the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening? Yes. That is great. So for those making comments, please make sure to direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes and re-mute your microphone when you're done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments very seriously. We thank you for taking the time to come and address us tonight. City Clerk, could you please identify the first person who signed up to speak tonight?
Yes, certainly. The first person is Shane Nicholson. Shane, I see that you've called in by phone tonight, so in just a moment here, I will go ahead and unmute you, and you will have the floor. Okay, your mic is live.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Shane.
Hi. Yeah, my name's Shane Nicholson, and I'm actually an employee with the city of Issaquah. And I just kind of wanted to, you know, give a little input on the new COVID-19, the vaccination mandates, and, you know, just a little thought from the people that actually this is, you know, really affecting. You know, the city of Issaquah, they pride themselves on equity and, you know, treating people the same and all that, but, you know, this mandate and my position, at this point, it almost feels like profiling, you know? Putting me in a group of people that, you know, might not align with the same views as others, and then basically discarding them without any feeling, you know? I mean, at this point, the city of Issaquah seems to have no regards for the feelings of those that, you know, want to take their medical freedom and make a decision to do something that, you know, could or could not, never know, could be a lifelong impact. And, you know, I just, you know, I used to go to work with pride and, you know, and do my job, and, you know, I loved it. I loved the city of Issaquah, but now with all this mandate stuff, and I'm, I'm not the only one, and I'm seeing it all over the place, but, you know, that kind of pressure and force is really driving the, you know, the morale and the ethic of work and all that around the city, and I'm just kind of curious, like, what the, you know, position of the city is in regards to losing that many employees and what's going to happen to the service, you know? You guys are saying that you want to help and protect the public, but at the time of, you know, snow and flood season, when you're down a majority of your employees, and not only just the people that aren't getting vaccinated, but those that are vaccinated and the ones that are looking for new jobs because they're, you know, they don't like the way things are going, and, you know, what are you guys going to do in the, in the wintertime or in the flood season or anything like that? And I feel like, you know, on that aspect, you guys aren't protecting the public. You're, you know, that's going to hurt a lot of people, or potentially could. So, yeah, I just really wanted to kind of give my two cents and how I feel, and, you know, it's almost, the whole thing for employees that aren't getting vaccinated, it just, this feels like peer pressure. And, you know, I've never succumbed to peer pressure. When it was come, you know, in school age, drugs and alcohol, you know, never succumbed to peer pressure. And if it's something that goes against how I feel at the time, I'm not going to do it, and that's my right, and that's everybody else's right. And for, you know, my employer to make a decision about my body, this should never happen. I mean, it's, it's gone way too far. And, and another thing, it's like, you know, I've already had COVID, and day by day, there's more studies, more research about those that have had, you know, have, have the antibodies and are naturally immune. It's just, it's the same as the polio and the measles vaccine. They say if you've already had it, don't get the vaccine. So I just don't quite understand the position and the difference, you know? It's all happening way too fast, and it's not giving those people that, you know, take a li, little longer to make decisions and, you know? I, I don't impulse buy anything. This feels to me like an impulse buy, and it's something that I don't want to do, and I shouldn't be forced to, to either do something against my will or feed my family. So, I mean, those are all things that I feel like should be taking into consider, taken into consideration just on a human rights standpoint and, you know, an equity standpoint, if that's really what the city of Issaquah believes. But, I mean, from what I can see, equity is not a thing. It's, you're told what to do, and if you don't align, then you're discarded without any care. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Shane. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
Yes. The next person signed up is Mike Bevins. Mike, I see you're also on the phone, so in just a moment here, I'll unmute you. All right. Your mic should be open. Mike, can you hear us? Mike, you may also need to unmute your cell phone if you had muted that as well.
Do you see the options for unmuting the cell phone, star three or star six?
Well, I've, I've unmuted Mike in WebEx, so the only thing he may need to do is unmute his actual phone if he had sort of a double mute. And let me just try something real quick here. Also, I guess while, while we're waiting for Mike, if there's anyone else on the line who'd like to make comments tonight, please raise your virtual hand. On the phone, press star three. If you're here in WebEx on a computer, please press the small hand icon. And while I'm monitoring that, Mike, I'm going to try unmuting you one more time. And your mic is open. All right. Still no response from Mike, and I'm monitoring the folks we have on the line with us tonight, and I'm not seeing anyone else indicate a desire to speak at this time.
Let's give Mike a few more seconds. So Mike, I'm sorry it's, we're unable to get the technology to work tonight, but if you want to work with Clerk Geezer between now and our next council meeting or next study session, she may be able to provide you with some more tips, because she's way better at this stuff than I am. City Clerk, are there still no other hands raised at this point in time? That's correct. Thank you very much. So thank you for the comments this evening. We had a city employee come and talk about issues with the city of Issaquah COVID-19 vaccine mandate, and we did not have any other speakers tonight, but I do want to remind folks that written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. I'd like to turn over now to Council President Hunt to see if she has any email comments to summarize on any of tonight's agenda topics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive an email that referenced multiple items on our agenda, and I also wanted to mention that we receive emails on a variety of topics, and I will only be summarizing emails that we received that specifically reference and specifically are related to items that are on tonight's agenda, per my past practice. On, we did receive an email from a community member which had comments on multiple items on AB 8230, which is Boards and Commissions' Stipends Policy. Comments included asking that we consider a lower amount per, a lower dollar amount per meeting and that this might have benefits. Also, comments on AB 8198, which is Proposed 2022 Budget and Salary Ordinance, had multiple questions about where there were increased costs in the budget, and also commented on items that this community member thought were miss, were attributed to environmental stewardship but did not think that they were correctly attributed to that. Then on AB 8199, Proposed 2022 Budget Levy and Revenue Sources, as well as other agenda bills that we have on our agenda this evening regarding budget and revenue sources, provided comments and also provided that this community member felt they were reasonable. And that concludes emails that specifically referenced items on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item of business is committee and regional reports, and we'll be starting tonight with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polley. This is Councilmember Hall. I have no report this evening.
Nice and brief. Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, Mayor Polley. The Eastside Human Services Forum met this morning, and we acknowledged the onboarding of Caitlin Petrella, the forum's new executive director, who is off to a really impressive start. We had community reports, and we also had a presentation from the King County Regional Homelessness Authority by Alexis Mercedes-Rink. Our next meeting will be in December, and then I'm also on the Healthier Here Governing Board, and they will be meeting this Thursday afternoon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Very short report. I have not attended a meeting since the last time we did reports, but I do have an Economic Development District Board meeting on Wednesday, and I will report back after. And then I just wanted to take a moment to thank the chamber for a successful Salmon Days. Really nice getting back to seeing people in public despite the rain, and so I wanted to just thank, thank the chamber for all of their efforts for that event. That concludes my report.
Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on September 29th, and we had one item on our agenda, which was a request from Visit Issaquah for funding next year, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of Visit Issaquah's request for $180,000 in funding for next year. And I'm assuming that this is still the schedule, that on October 18th, the city council will be considering the 2022 proposed contract for Visit Issaquah. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will meet at 4:00 p.m. on October 14th, but I do not have the agenda yet. That's my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. The Beachhead Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting this Thursday, October 7th, from 10 till 12. Unfortunately, I will be out of town and unable to attend. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting next Wednesday, October 13th, from 7 till 9 p.m. Some agenda highlights include potential action on a metro plan updates and revised FCA guiding principles, a discussion of the Board of Health Bicycle Helmet Regulation, and an update on the King County Clean Water Plan. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Martz. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polley. This is Chris Ray. I have no report this evening.
Thank you very much. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. I have two reports. On September 30th, last Thursday, Mayor Polley, Director Watling, Human Services Manager Negrilla, and City Administrator Bobquitz, and myself, met with the CEO and leadership of the newly-formed King County Regional Homelessness Authority. And some information about the King County Regional Homelessness Authority from their website is that the Regional Homelessness Authority is meant to unify and coordinate what was previously a fragmented approach. We shared from people with personal experience that the old system's services were geographical and administratively disconnected, data collection was duplicative or insomniac or not useful, and people were faced with dead ends rather than meaningful support. So the mission of this agency is to correct those things and provide people experiencing homelessness with meaningful support. It was a very productive meeting. It was a good meeting, and it was an introduction of, in which we provided information about the demographics of people experiencing homelessness in Issaquah, and they are interested in tailoring their approach to the specific needs of each community. So one thing from that meeting was that the recently approved positions, such as the homelessness outreach coordinator position, those positions have allowed us to have a lot more information that we are able to share about the specific needs that we have in our community. And we, we also discussed about how our topography and that people, many people experiencing homelessness in Issaquah are living in the open spaces and other specific concerns that, that are specific to people experiencing homelessness in Issaquah. So we also, so currently they are mostly meeting with electives and groups all over the county. They will have their funding in about three months from now, and they'll be beginning, so right now they're sort of in an introductory phase. And our main messages were that we're interested in working with them on advocacy efforts for state and federal support, and that we are interested in staying contact, staying in contact with them as they begin to implement housing solutions as well as wraparound service That concludes that meeting report out. And then I also have one other quick report on September, also on September 30th, had a Title 18 ad hoc meeting. This is the ad hoc meeting of council members that discusses Title 18, which is our municipal land use code. And we discussed the zoning and land use memo that will shortly be going to our volunteer commission, the Planning Policy Commission, for their review, and so we provided some guidance and scoping type advice on the sort of questions and the framing that the staff was putting into that memo. And the next meeting of the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee will be two weeks from the 30th, since we meet every two weeks. That concludes my report.
That's great. Thank you, Council President. The next item on the agenda this evening is the mayor's report. There will not be an executive session this evening, but I would like to talk about three proclamations that I recently issued. "In honor of the Issaquah Salmon Days Festival the past weekend," which council members have already alluded to, "I proclaimed our salmon-friendly city as Fish-Aqua. I congratulate the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce for all their efforts in navigating a smaller venue and implementing many safety protocols that help make this a successful event." The second proclamation declares October as Arts and Humanities Month. "The arts have helped collectively lead us through the pandemic, lifting our spirits, unifying communities, and jump-starting the economy, despite COVID's devastating impact on America's arts sector. Issaquah is home to a vibrant community of arts, culture, and humanities organizations, creative businesses, artists, makers, and creative workers that positively impact our city in immeasurable ways." The final proclamation proclaims October as Substance Abuse Prevention Month. Substance abuse prevention is an extremely cost-effective model in comparison to later high utilization interventions. And by stopping the drug use before it starts, we can prevent the disease of addiction and create stronger neighborhoods in our community. I welcome Influence the Choices representative Noah Noes to join us on camera, and Noah, thank you for sharing a few words with us regarding the importance of this campaign. You're up. And you need to take yourself off mute.
I apologize. I would like to thank you on behalf of Teens Encouraging Community Health and Influence the Choice for recognizing our, our group's efforts in this area. And as you guys know, substance abuse in our community is a huge issue, and it's extremely important that we start for, start preventing it before it happens. And on that same front, like, some studies have shown that like a dollar of prevention is worth $34 of intervention. So, thank you.
Thank you, Noah. I look forward to seeing you this Thursday at 9:30 in the morning on the steps of City Hall and presenting you with the signed proclamation, and I want to again thank you and Influence the Choice for all that you're doing in this important issue in our community. Thanks, Noah. "King County Executive Dow Constantine recently recognized the Snoqualmie Tribe Vaccine Partnership for its superior performance in responding to the region during the COVID-19 viral pandemic. The Snoqualmie Tribe Vaccine Partnership included the Snoqualmie Tribe, Eastside Fire and Rescue, the cities of Semamish and Issaquah, Washington State Parks, and with support of King County Emergency Management and Public Health, Seattle and King County, and hundreds of volunteers. Our community resilience is evident from this award. So proud of the partnership that we all pulled together." And that concludes the mayor's report for this evening. The next item of business tonight is informational updates. ID 0945, Solid Waste Contract Update. And I'd like to invite Gary Simick, our Utilities Engineering Manager, and Jeff Brown with Epicenter Consulting to present this item. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm going to share my screen here and jump right into the informational update. Hey. Second here. There we go. So, yeah, thank you, Solid Waste. Solid Waste hauling and processing contract tonight, giving you informational update. And as Mayor mentioned, Jeff Brown, a super consultant. He is, you may know him from our last contract. If you were around at that time, I'm very pleased to have him on board with us. And he's on the phone in case any detailed questions come up. The next slide here. Again, informational briefing on our competitive process. And this will be for a new contract that starts in July 1st, 2023. That is not a typo, 2023. The reason we are so far ahead of the game, which I, you may have read in the staff report, is the time that's needed for the contractor to purchase and obtain new equipment, including fleet. And while in any year that's going to be challenging with a supply chain as it is, it may take a little longer. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. That's why it may seem like we're coming to you early on this. Existing contract is with Ecology back in the day when, 2011, when we hired them through a very competitive process. They were clean escapes. And because of that competitive nature in the field, the rates were rather low with a high level of service. So we, we've seen some changes in the reason, and we will likely be expecting higher rates for this new contract because of that. But again, this contract with Ecology ends in 2023, June 30th. High-level explanation of our process. So we're here in October. And what I'm going to be just highlighting today is our information in our draft request for proposal and contract that is going to go out in what's called an industry review. We're hoping to actually send that out tomorrow or later this week. And this will give contractors that are, that are likely to bid on this a few weeks to let us know what they think of this draft. So we're going to get that information back. We're also going to meet with our city attorney, Mr. Haney, during the next few weeks, talk over things with him. And then we'll be issuing the final request for proposal in November to all interested parties. In the first quarter, after we receive the proposals back, hopefully we'll have good competition. We will be conducting a qualitative and quantitative review of all of the proposals and finalizing the contract with the highest scoring proponent. And then our work begins with, with you again in study sessions, where we will go over the, what's called the base contract and alternatives that are part of that submission. So I expect that there will be at least two, potentially three study sessions to get from the original to the final contract. And then our focus areas. Just want to highlight five here and just let you know these are ones that are likely to come back in detailed discussion during those study sessions in 2022. But just wanted to touch on each one very briefly here to let you know the direction we're heading. So the first here is fleet. So possible options we looked at were electric fleet, renewable gas fleet as we have now, and then a phased approach. Where we're heading is slightly extending the contract period to 12 years rather than typical 10 years, and allow a contractor to use their old vehicles for two years, then ramp up to electric vehicles. The reason we're, we're thinking in that term on the cusp of electric vehicles becoming a real option for fleets. Now, we may hear back over the next couple of weeks that contractors are ready to go after a complete electrical, electric fleet. And we'll, we'll take that in consideration when we, when we hear that. Now, while that will be our base contract, we will also be having a alternative being bid on, which would be that, that alternative electric, electric fleet, and then also a natural gas fleet. So you'll be able to have much more discussion on this when we receive our proposals and come back to you in the study sessions. Now, the next topic is frequency of residential collections. So right now, the status quo, we have weekly collection of all streams from our residential households. And another option that's available is going to every other week, which some other cities and areas have done. That would be a very sustainable option, especially in the reduction of fuel for the fleet. What we are going to propose is keeping the weekly service for now, and as an alternative package, asking for what the rate reduction would be for going to every other week. So we'll be able to bring you back that and have a discussion on those two options. Range of recyclables collected. This is an important issue in terms to, of our contamination of streams that we have been seeing in the recycling and composting realms. So our base proposal will be for people to bid on is a reduction of the recyclables that will be collected to those that we really know can be used in the market right now and be not including those that, that most likely aren't getting recycled and are potentially contaminating other streams. But we will have an alternative approach of, of the contractor adding in a few additional items to our base list. So again, that's a good discussion we'll be able to come back, back and have with. The fourth out of five here is outreach and education structure. What we are going to be proposing is having the contractor include the basic or bare minimum outreach and education in their proposal to us. And anything above and beyond that for waste reduction or sustainability, we would cover either through city staff or through staff managing a consulting contract. And the logic being that we really, the haulers are really, you know, they do their best job on the hauling and processing. And we need their support in education outreach, but we'd like to, to just have them focus more on the hauling and processing aspect. And then finally, carbon footprint. Now, one of the things, one of the items we just talked about that have a big effect on the carbon footprint is if we, if we go to a every other week collection that would really drop our, our use of, of fuel. But being that as it may, what we have decided to do for this contract for now is really emphasize sustainability at a global level at many elements of the contract. So it's, it's baked into the contract. And that's rather than asking for the contractor to, to propose any carbon offsets at this time. So we're really viewing this as a very sustainable environmental contract for everybody to bid on. So again, those are the five focus areas. There's going to be again a base bid for all those with alternatives. And then again, in 2022, we'll be back, back with you to discuss these in general. And just to end up here, we'll, just a little bit of the next steps. So again, number one, preparing this industry review and contract, which is about ready to go, and we'll be releasing that. And again, looping back with Mr. Haney on those drafts just to make sure everything are all, all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. We're going to get that feedback from the industry and incorporate that into the RFP, and then release that in November of this year. And then we'll be off to the races in early 2022, doing our internal review and coming back to all of you to have a lively discussion next year. So thank you very much, and just wanted to ask if there's any questions on this briefing now?
Gary, that is great. Thanks. I'm keeping my eye on the chat to see if there's any questions. But as you and I talked earlier today, you did a great job on capturing all the points in a really short amount of time. Nicely done. Gold star. Okay, let's, let's start with a comment from Councilmember Goodman, followed by a question from Councilmember Mertz.
Um, well, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say that I wanted to commend you on just a very, very well-done memo to the council. It was incredibly well-organized, straightforward, had all the information that, certainly that I needed. And I, I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And a big, again, a, a big shout out to Mr. Jeff Brown. He is Herculean in his effort here, and I just, again, very happy we have him on our team.
Thanks. And apologies, Councilmember Goodman. I didn't see the second part of when there were no questions, so I apologize. Councilmember Mertz for a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm looking, I'm interested in a little bit more information on the, the brief that you talked about, our carbon footprint. It says the city's current waste hauling services are carbon neutral. And then incorporating sustainability in the RFP contract design is a global value. I don't really know what that means.
I'm gonna ask Tisha to allow Jeff to come on in here and, and address that if he is able. He's on the phone with us.
I'm unmuting Jeff now.
Okay, I'm here. Am I here?
Yes.
You hear me? Okay, good. Yes, I can answer that. So right now, the contract sets goals, but it doesn't actually have requirements for carbon offsets. And one of the things I thought about was continuing the goal statement in the new contract. So that wouldn't necessarily change. But by global, actually looking at the contract from a global view, it means looking at the different elements of the contract that are perhaps not necessary, but that drive fuel use and road wear use and traffic impacts. And another example, you, you heard the one obvious example of collection frequency. But another more obscure one is right now under the current contract, if somebody calls by 5 o'clock or so, I think it is, the contractor will actually put a truck out to go pick it up anytime before 8, so they can provide a same-day miss collection. And what that means is the drivers would go to the transfer station or the recycling facility, the composting facility. They'd dump their trucks out, they'd go back to the truck base, and then a call would come in for a relief driver, somebody else to drive the same truck right back from the truck base, which could be in downtown Seattle, or I mean, south, southern Seattle, drive it back out to Isiqua to pick up a miss. That's the kind of thing that is Cadillac service, but it actually comes with a pretty severe energy use impact. And so I think when we're looking at the contract terms, almost every element in there has a decision point on, is this necessary? Does this contribute to the service the ratepayers are receiving? And is the fuel usage reasonable for the benefit gained?
So the, the first part of my question was the statement that the city's current waste hauling services are carbon neutral. If they're carbon neutral and the frequent... I'm sorry?
Oh, they're not. So there's a, it, it kind of got, phrase that as a, as, I guess, a handy way to describe a contract term. But the contract term, when I read it, unless I'm mistaken, is basically to subscribe to certain goals and to put good faith effort in. But there's not actually meat that is a specific requirement from the Dubai offsets or to do anything else under the current contract.
Okay. I'm referring to the specific sentence on page 15 of the packet. "As a reminder, the city's current waste hauling services are carbon neutral." So given that-
I think that's incorrect. Sorry.
I see. Okay. I, you know, I, I will continue to want to see, I mean, carbon emissions are the centerpiece of the challenges, the environmental challenges that we have right now. So I would like to continue to see ways for the city to up its game. We just had a conversation about this a couple of weeks ago and about making meaningful changes. I would hope there would be meaningful changes we could do other than things that just cut service to our constituents. I mean, it may well be that that, that that's an important part of where we're going as a, as a community. But it, it seems that, you know, I think that, I, I would hope there would be other ways that we could look at improving our carbon footprint on our waste, other than the, I would argue, perhaps a little bit dubious method of just reducing service. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. It looks like Councilmember Walsh has a question.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Gary, I know that our multifamily housing has a rate of recycling currently, and we're always looking for ways to improve that. Is there anything in the contract that would look toward those ideas? Or is that more on the outreach and education portion or working from a city standpoint with individual properties?
Gary is muted.
Councilmember, your first part of the question broke up for me. I didn't quite, I heard that we were, you were asking about what is in the contract for multifamily, but I, I didn't hear what the, the original part, the very first part was.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for asking for the clarification. I'm talking about multifamily housing and their recycling rates. So often, a multifamily unit has a lower recycling rate than a single-family housing. And we're always looking for ways to improve that. But I don't know whether there's anything in the contract or the RFP process that speaks toward that idea, or if it's more on an education and outreach standpoint.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a first crack at that and just ask Jeff if he has something in addition. But, you know, though, it's, it's mainly the latter, where it's about the effort and energy that, you know, we want to put into driving those decisions for, let's just use an example of a re- the most difficult one, a retrofit, where there is a multifamily that doesn't have a lot of room for recycling or composting. Working with them and the owner of that building to try to make room for that so that people can participate, that really is something we need to do on our end, you know, working with them or in our code or policy. In terms of the contract, they will have certainly the opportunity to have, there's a bare minimum that will be required for multifamily, for them to partake. So really, it's, it's us to encourage more of the use of that. Jeff, would you agree, or would you add a little bit different there?
Yeah, I would think that that is pretty much right on. The contract is focused towards the contractor providing the basic informational materials and weather, you know, inclement weather schedules and all the service-related information. And when you get into problem solving at a particular site, you know, let's say, for example, you have an older multifamily unit that has a prescribed number of parking spaces, and perhaps one of those parking spaces might need to be given up to have a more expansive waste diversion system. That's definitely something where you'd have some problem solving that would be perhaps a contracted consultant, or it would be a staff person that would be working through that process to help the, the multifamily unit work through how to actually get more containers available for their residents.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am looking at the chat to look for additional questions or comments. But Gary, I just wanted to confirm a couple of things with you. One on what Councilmember Mertz had said, and that was about carbon neutral. And I believe, you know, a decade between contracts is a long time. And so aspirational wanting to be carbon neutral and encouraging them to be carbon neutral is one thing. Actually, being carbon neutral is something entirely different. And I think what we're trying to do with this new contract is to get to carbon neutral. If that's true. Okay. And then the second thing, maybe along the lines of what Councilmember Walsh said, is diversion has always been a focus. But it seems that in your comments tonight, both of you, it's diversion and quality of what is being diversion diverted that is important. So that we are doing the full cycle of whatever goes in the blue box and the green box comes out as a useful product at the other end. And that hauling things off to the landfill because we didn't do it right is going to be a focus this time. Not so much the diversion number, but the quality of the product. Are we producing, are we collecting things that can actually be recycled? Are we creating great compost to bring back to the community? That would be a value you've also incorporated in this round that we really didn't have 10 years ago.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. I am not seeing any other comments or questions, so I would like to thank the both of you for coming in today. This is exciting, considering all the conversations we've been having about environmental focus and climate action plan. And this is going to be a very interesting next nine months. So thank you very much for both coming in.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
So there is no action requested this evening. The solid waste contract will be coming back to council for feedback and action in 2022. And we'll move to the next item on the agenda this evening, which is the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized, the comments on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. At this point in time, I'd like to turn the speaker over, Speaker's chair, over to Councilmember De Michelle, who would like to make a statement before we go through the rest of the description. Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I would like to state for the record that I am currently employed with an entity that is included in the city's payables, Influence the Choice. I currently fill the role of- I currently fill the role of temporary executive director of Influence of Choice. The city serves as a fiscal agent for this agency in the disbursement of a federal grant. Grant funds are being dispersed under this month's accounts payable. I have asked for advice from the city attorney as to whether this warrants a conflict of interest, and have been informed that I am not legally required to be excused from voting, as the city is carrying on a decision that was previously made by the council. However, for the sake of transparency, I would like to declare this employment and have my statement entered in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
This is Councilmember Hall. They have.
This is Councilmember Walsh. They have.
Thank you both. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent counter and consider it under regular business? And I will keep my eye on the chat. And is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I move to approve the consent calendar as it appears in this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, and I will ask the city clerk to call the rule.
Starting with Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. The next item of business this evening is uh a public hearing, AB 8198, the proposed 2022 budget and salary ordinance, and we will be conducting the public hearing this evening. This item was last before council at the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one council study session. And I'd like to invite interim finance director Autumn Monahan to present this item. Welcome, Autumn.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, and members of the city council. Can I share my screen? Does that look okay?
It looks good.
Great, thank you. So thank you, um, and good evening. Tonight is our public hearing night for the 2022 proposed budget. There are two public hearings tonight, the budget and salary ordinance, as well as levy and revenue sources. So first up is the budget and salary ordinance. RCW thirty five A point three three requires cities to hold two public hearings prior to adopting the budget. So the preliminary public hearing is tonight, and the final public hearing is scheduled for November fifteenth. Here is an overview of our budget schedule. Just as a reminder, following tonight, we'll begin budget deliberations on October twelfth, as well as the twenty sixth. And as we move along on the budget calendar, our goal is for adoption on November fifteenth. Here's a quick budget overview. The 2022 proposed budget totals one hundred and forty five point six million dollars, with our largest fund, the general fund, at sixty one point four million. Uh, this chart shows once again how the 2022 proposed budget aligns with our strategic plan goals. Of note, for next year, there is a slight increase to both mobility and environmental stewardship over this year, but largely these areas are remaining fairly steady. Here's an overview of the general fund, which is the city's most flexible fund, and where the city accounts for most of its traditional day-to-day government services, including uh public safety and parks and community services. And as I mentioned, the 2022 proposed budget, general fund total sixty one point four million. But uh, as far as personnel overview, the proposed budget adds eighteen point five FTEs, and we classify as others. The 2021 adopted budget had us at about two hundred and fifty FTEs, right around our post-recession minimum of two fifty uh back in two thousand sixteen. The 2022 proposed budget brings us back up to two hundred and sixty nine FTEs, though that is still below our pre-pandemic maximum of two eighty five, and below the pre-recession maximum of two seventy eight back in two thousand nine. Um, we are keeping a close eye on our undesignated fund balance, and as our financial management policy aims for fifteen to twenty percent. And as a reminder, the proposed twenty twenty two budget reflects an undesignated fund balance of nineteen percent. And that concludes my very brief uh presentation on the budget. I'm here to answer questions before the public hearing.
Thank you, Autumn. I am looking in the chat to see if there's any council questions before we open the public hearing. So give me a few seconds. Okay, at this point in time, I'm not seeing any, so I will open the public hearing at seven fifty five PM. And just to remind folks, for those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device, and one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. Uh, City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Mayor, no one signed up in advance to speak on the public hearing, so I'm just taking a moment here to monitor the attendees and see if there are any raised hands or any comments in the chat. Uh, I do see a raised hand um from Mike Evans, who was one of the individuals who'd signed up to make comments under audience comments tonight. Um-
Mike, uh, it sounds like you may have figured out how it would be that you could provide comments tonight. Now that we're into the public hearing portion, your comments would have to be germane to the budget. Let me look at my topic again. Uh, the 2022 budget and salary ordinance. So if that's what you would like to speak to tonight, that's great. Please turn on your mic and speak. Um, if it's related to any other item, unfortunately, it will have to wait till the public comments at the next council meeting, which is October eighteenth. Or you can write to city council at citycouncil@isacuawat.gov and submit comments at any time.
And Mayor, I see that Mike has lowered his raised hand.
Okay, thanks.
At this time, I'm not seeing anyone else indicating a desire to speak.
Oh, thanks for that. Apologies, Mike. This technology has been bumpy for all of us, and the first time someone comes to a meeting, it's kind of tricky. So please feel free to write the city council. Um, so if there, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed at seven fifty eight PM, and there is no action being requested on this item tonight. The second public hearing on the budget will be held on November fifteenth, twenty twenty one, after which the council is anticipated to adopt the budget. The next item of business is AB eight one nine nine, proposed 2022 budget, levy and revenue sources, and again, we'll be conducting the public hearing. The presentation on this item will also encompass the next two regular business items related to the city's 2022 revenue sources, AB eight two three one and AB eight two four seven. After the joint presentation, I will open the public hearing. No action is being requested on the property tax levy agenda bill this evening. The council is requested to make a motion to forward the two regular business items to the November first council meeting. And I'd like to invite interim finance director Autumn Monahan, who is probably still here, to present on this item.
I'm back.
There you go.
Great, sharing my next presentation. All right, so next up is property tax and other revenue sources in the public hearing. So RCW eighty four point five five requires jurisdictions levying property tax to hold a public hearing prior to adopting property tax levy rates. We will be back on November first with an ordinance for city council's vote, and I'll also review other proposed revenues, including those returning for council action on November first. So first up, a property tax overview. Property tax represents seventeen percent of the general fund, represented by the blue area here on this chart. State law allows jurisdictions to increase the property tax annually by up to one percent, or the implicit price deflator, or IPD, uh, which is a measure of inflation, uh, whichever is lower, plus the value of new construction. For 2022, the IPD is three point eight six percent, so our limit is one percent for next year. The value of this one percent increase is about ninety eight thousand dollars, which is included in the mayor's proposed budget. A significant driver for increases or decreases to your property tax bill is based on your property's assessed value. And while assessed values actually decreased slightly from 2020 to 2021, a seventeen percent increase is projected for next year, which means the median residence this year assessed at eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollars would go up to about nine hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. So to equate how much is paid to the city, if we use the example of a property owner with an assessed value of nine hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, the amount paid to the city would be seven hundred and thirteen dollars next year, or a forty eight dollar increase from this current year. And just to quickly note, historically, the city levy is about ten percent of a homeowner's overall total property tax bill. We've received questions on that before. And the amount paid to the city has grown at average of three point six percent a year during the last decade. I wanted to take some time tonight to review other revenue proposals in the proposed budget. Uh, we are proposing administratively lowering the trigger speed on our school zone cameras from twenty seven to twenty six miles per hour to match many of our neighboring jurisdictions. This additional revenue would help offset core costs from forced infractions, and is estimated to generate about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The proposed budget also includes increases to recreation fees that reflect inflation. Uh, these increases can be made administratively, um, per the IMC or our code, and we plan to provide more details to the council in your October twelfth study session packet. Now, there are two agenda bills on your agenda tonight that would require council approval and are slated for a vote on November first. Uh, the first was Agenda Bill eight two three one, which would also increase CPD fees by five percent to reflect inflation. Um, these changes can also be made administratively, but council action is needed to formally update the fee tables listed in the Isaguac municipal code. So uh, taking this action to help avoid any confusion for permit applicants, um, as the codified fees would reflect the administrative adjustments. Uh, the increase to these fees enables permit revenues to track with our increasing labor costs and would generate about a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars in revenue. And finally, utility tax. Uh, the city charges utility taxes on several utilities, uh, include electricity, natural gas, telephone, um, and many others, for use for our city infrastructure, like our right-of-way. And these taxes are then usually cashed on to customers. In two thousand and nineteen, city council adopted a three percent tax for water and sewer, which we then pass on to our utility customers, and this helps support the general fund. There are some residents in Isaguac, however, who are not our water and sewer customers, but are instead served by our neighbor, the Smamish Plateau Water District. And in 2020, a state supreme court ruling confirmed that cities can impose taxes on water and sewer districts. So Agenda Bill eighty two forty seven proposes that we impose the same three percent utility tax for water and sewer on Smamish Plateau Water District. The district has a little more than eleven hundred water customers in city limits, with about eight hundred also receiving sewer services. In 2020, the district collected about five point six million in revenues from these customers. So if the proposed utility tax started on January first of 2022, the estimated new ongoing revenues for the general fund would be about a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Uh, this action would also ensure that we're treating the two utilities, the city and the district, which offer the same services equally. And since the district would likely pass this cost on to its customers, it ensures that we're treating all Isaguac residents fairly. Uh, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions before the public hearing.
Thank you, Autumn. It looks like we have a question from Councilmember Martz.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. Um, can you go back to, you had a slide that was value of median residence. Um, I, I think this can be confusing to people. Can you explain how, um, given we say that taxes can only increase by one percent, um, you say the average growth of three point six percent per year over the last decade, can you explain that discrepancy for folks?
Sure. All right.
That's it.
So back to this slide, right, Councilmember Martz?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, so the, so the one percent that we're asking council members uh to approve is a one percent increase in the total amount that we're levying in property taxes. That is not the amount you would see on your property tax bill. So once we know the amount we would be levying, then it's dispersed among all of our property owners based on their assessed value. And so um, it can vary by year, and you know, we've had requests or, or inquiries from community members of, why are my property taxes going up so much? And um, it's, it's based very much on your assessed value, and also um, your property tax, as I mentioned, is only about ten percent of the total property tax bill that you receive that's, that comes to the city. Uh, the rest is by, levied by other agencies.
And I think Councilmember Martz, you were looking also for some information about the states and the state's one percent cap, and why that is not one percent of the total property value, but one percent of what the city collected last year. Is that what your question was meant to-
Well, I, I think it's just people hear a one percent growth, right? And then they see three point six percent. And I, I mean, I'll just say, I, it still confuses me, and I've been doing this for twelve years. So can you, can you remind, is it because property values declined for a while, and we collected the same amount over a smaller fraction? Uh, I mean, I, I guess I'm still confused, right? If it's, if it's not one percent, it's three point six percent. If we made it zero, would it not be zero? Would it be two point six percent?
I may pull up something that could be helpful as a visual.
Because it's, it's one percent of existing property, and then new property gets treated differently, right?
I'm just going to clarify that, Councilmember Martz. It's one percent of what was collected on existing property. It's not one percent of the value of the existing property.
Right, right.
Yep.
So, Councilmember Martz, this was in the, um, in our agenda bill, and this is a breakdown of what the median resident value was in Isaguac each year, what our levy rate is, which is the, which is determined by the one percent or not, based on the, the previous year, and then the amount that was actually due to the city as an example. And so you can see, if you were to go back a decade, the amount that you actually are paying to the city has gone up by three point six percent over the past decade, as far as an average. Uh, but the amount that you may have paid could vary very much by not only the levy rate, which you see as going down, but then the increase in um, your assessed value.
I'm afraid I'm even more confused than before. What number, what number only grows by one percent per year if we allow it, or zero percent if we don't allow it? It's not any of the numbers that's on this page.
The one percent is based off of our base levy, and then we can go up by one percent, so it's ninety eight thousand dollars. So the total amount that we can levy is the ten million.
I really don't understand how, if we can only increase one percent on the total levy, how people can see three point six percent increases.
I think, Councilmember Martz, we may not have a graphic over table that is really getting to the nuts of what you want. So we will ensure that we come back with additional information that demonstrates it. Uh, because it, it, I want to make sure we answer your question.
Yes, we can do that, Mayor Polly.
Okay, thanks. And actually, probably what I'd like to do, Autumn, is have you follow up with Councilmember Martz and make sure that we're actually answering the question that he's asking. That would be great, because we should be able to show this graphically. And then the last thing I'll, I'll add is that one of the reasons we talk about structural deficit is because our costs do go up by more than one percent a year, um, but the mill rates have been going down- been going down since the state enacted their legislation and capped it at, you can collect 1% of what you collected the previous year, not 1% more on the assessed value. It's a tricky story to tell, and it sounds like we need to work on our narrative.
Thank you.
No problem. I am not seeing any other questions at this point in time. So I will be opening the public hearing at 8:10 p.m. And again, for those of you who've joined us tonight and would like to make comments but didn't sign up in advance, you can raise your virtual hand. Just in case somebody new has come on, if you're on the phone, press star 3. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. Could vary by device. And one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Mayor, no one has signed up in advance to speak, and at this time, I'm not seeing anyone indicate a desire to speak either.
Thank you. So is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed at 8:11 p.m. There is no action being requested tonight, and the council is anticipated to take action on this item at the November 1st, 2021 council meeting. But the next two items were presented jointly as part of your public hearing on the levy and revenue sources. I'm not sure if we have additional questions on those two, but I'll wait a few minutes in the chat to see if so before asking to see if anybody would care to make a motion. Not seeing questions or comments? Is there someone prepared to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I move to forward AB 8231 to the November 1st, 2021 council meeting for deliberation and action.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? If so, please put a comment in the chat for me. I am not seeing any. So the motion before council is to forward AB 8231 to the November 1st, 2021 council meeting for deliberation and action. And City Clerk, can you please call the roll vote?
Starting with Council President Hunt. Aye. Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. I believe, and I'll give a second chance for questions, on revenue sources, utility tax for Smamish Plateau Water District customers. I'll look to see if there are any questions in the chat before asking someone to make I'm not seeing anybody. Would somebody care to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I move to forward AB 8247 to the November 1st, 2021 council meeting for deliberation and action.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Keeping my eye on the chat. If there is no discussion, the motion before council is to forward AB 8247 to the November 1st, 2021 council meeting for deliberation and action. And City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, starting with Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
And Council President Hunt?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. The next item of business is AB 8230, Boards and Commissions Stipend Policy, and the request before council tonight is to adopt the ordinance. And I'd like to invite Chief of Staff Tina Eggers to present this item. Tina?
Thank you. Yes, Chief of Staff Tina Eggers speaking. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you regarding the proposed stipend program for the city's boards and commissions. I'll keep my comments brief. This was last in front of you at our study session last month. You expressed support for the program as presented. There were two key elements being $50 per meeting stipends and eligibility for those that are at or below 100% of the AMI. As such, an ordinance has been prepared. This closely models the City of Olympia's ordinance, and if adopted, would become effective November 1. This aligns nicely with the startup of the Equity Board. The program would be open to all our boards and commissions, and this timing complements our annual recruitment scheduled in the new year. If adopted, we look forward to monitoring participation, building upon our demographic information data, and sharing information next year that will certainly help shape the program further. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. I am looking in the chat for some questions, and I have one from Councilmember De Michelle, a clarification for Mr. Haney.
Oops, thank you. Wanted to make sure I was unmuted. Mr. Haney, if he's available?
I am.
Okay. I am looking at page 375 of our packet, and the second whereas, it says, "Whereas the City of Isaguamunicipal wishes to remove economic barriers to community members who may wish to serve upon the city's boards and commissions, but may need assistance with costs relating to transportation, meals, or for childcare expenses." So that wording is there in the whereas's, but is not included in the ordinance. And my question is, does that statement in the whereas's restrict us to just those three areas of expenses, or are those given as examples of possible requests for, or reasons for reimbursement?
I would say that they are examples. The ordinance does not require that a person submit reimbursable receipts and so forth. It simply requires that a person show that they attest that they have these kinds of expenses and that they are at a certain income level, and therefore, they would be paid a flat stipend relating to those. It isn't related specifically to receipt. So I see this as just a recital of the reason why you're doing this, as opposed to a requirement.
All right. Thank you very much. That affirms my reading as well, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember De Michelle. If there are no other questions, is somebody willing to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt ordinance number 2955, establishing a stipend program in Chapter 2.96, Administration of the Isaguamunicipal Code, with an effective date of November 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? And I will keep my eye on the chat. Let's start with Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Thanks. I wanted to thank the Human Services Commission, who worked over the course of the last approximately year and made a number of recommendations regarding the formation of Equity Board, and from their work, this stipend program recommendation came about. So I wanted to thank them for bringing this initially forward and to our attention. I think our council's comments and suggestions have been incorporated in the ordinance that is in front of us, so I wanted to thank the staff for that. As this is rolled out, since it is new to the city and our boards and commissions are so valuable to us, I just want to keep track of making sure that this does reduce the barriers, that we are hoping it will, and also that it's easy to participate. As I mentioned in our last study session, I think it's important that this doesn't become a burden on people's time, because one of the reasons why people, why some people aren't able to volunteer on our boards and commissions is because of the amount of time that it takes. So just want to keep an eye on that and make sure that this is implemented in as effectively and efficiently as possible. But I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and I look forward to hearing about the program metrics when this comes back with that information about how the program is going. And I also think that other cities may be interested in hearing about that, once we have more data about how it's working for us. So, thanks, and I will be in support.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Councilmember Hall, followed by Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I also wanted to share my support of this agenda bill this evening for a lot of the same reasons that Council President Hunt mentioned. I do think that this is where many cities and jurisdictions in the region will be heading in the future, as we look to try to put a value on the service that these members contribute to cities, and in particular, how we attract diverse voices to the public policymaking process and ensure that we're putting equity front and center by hearing more voices, simply put. Just real quick, I wanted to make sure, to share some thoughts that I have on this. For the record, you know, this is a financial, a tool to provide financial support and a service incentive for individuals volunteering their time with city boards and commissions. When it comes to intent, I really see this as support for transportation, childcare, other related costs that would ordinarily prevent these individuals from participating from government in this way in the first place. So this is a really special program. I'm looking forward to seeing how it works. Looking forward to monitoring the program metrics and demographics data that was presented to us as well, to ensure that it lines up with our desired outcomes. I will be voting aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh, echoing much of what I've heard in support of this. Want to thank the Human Services Board for review of this and all of the staff time that has gone into it. I am in support of this, but I will say that I will consider this a failure if it does not get used. This is not us trying to sit here and virtue signal about we want diversity. If this doesn't get used by community members who are either currently serving on boards and have a financial need, or doesn't help to bring in new voices who need the financial commitment, then we need to revisit this policy, because either we haven't provided enough of a financial incentive, or we haven't rolled it out and done outreach to the community members. So I'm putting it out there that I am absolutely looking at this in the future, not just on, did we do a good thing and put a new policy out there, but did it make an impact? Are we going to see different voices and support the voices that are there that we want to keep involved in the conversation? So I look forward to seeing the information on how this program gets used, and I'm absolutely willing to revisit it if it doesn't get used, because that just means we didn't do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I'm not seeing anybody else in the comments list, so if there's no further discussion, the motion before council is to adopt ordinance number 2955, establishing a stipend program in Chapter 2.96, Administration of the Isaguamunicipal Code, with an effective date of November 1st, 2021. And Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, starting with Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thanks. That passes unanimously. I want to thank you all for working on this. I think it's a great step. I want to make sure Councilmember Walsh isn't being too hard on herself. There's a famous saying out there, what you do for me without me, you do to me. This is a great idea. If it's not used, it may not be that it's not advertised, and it may not be whatever. We actually have to do a better job going out to those that we're hoping to attract and asking them to provide solutions. So I hope when we do this, we go back and think more broadly about interviewing and speaking with groups that we're hoping to sit at the table and say, we thought of this, but what else would you like us to do? Because we need to make sure they're telling us how to get them to the table, and I don't want you to feel like you failed if it's not well-used. I think that just means we need some bigger, broader conversations. So don't be too hard on yourself. The next item of business this evening, I believe, I have to scroll down here a bit, is Good of the Order. And I will keep an eye on the chat to see if someone has something for Good of the Order. And while I'm doing that, I will do budget deliberation schedule. And I'm going to give Council President Hunt the floor, and just keep my eye to see if anybody else has anything to add for Good of the Order.
I'm not seeing anything for Good of the Order currently.
Oh, I may, I wonder if I'm working off an older script. If you do not have an update on the deliberation schedule, I have some upcoming meeting notes that I can share.
Thank you. I think, I think this may have related to an earlier meeting, but I will mention that there will be an email with topics around the budget discussion that will go out from the administration. And one council member has provided additional and overlapping topics, but if there are topics that you, sort of those broad policy topics about the budget that you do not see represented in that list, per our usual practice, we're going to be building that list and using that to guide some of the upcoming conversations. So keep an eye out for that email, which I don't think has gone out yet.
That is great, Council President Hunt. Thank you very much. We did have a discussion today about questions that are for clarifying purposes, and then also questions that could be great policy questions to be structured within the meetings themselves. So thanks for pulling that out when I put you on the spot. Okay, upcoming council meetings. Actually, I'm going to see, City Administrator Bob Quitt, I saw you turn your camera on for a second. Is there some information you wanted to add to Good of the Order?
No, Council President covered it as far as the upcoming budget discussion. Thank you.
That's great. So there is a city council study session on Tuesday, October 12th, and the potential agenda items include performance measurements update and the 2022 budget deliberations. October 18th, there is a regular council meeting. Potential agenda items include the American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation, RE, the Small Business Flex Fund, lodging tax funding, Green Isaguamunicipal funding opportunity. It's a forest carbon credit program. There's no executives this evening, and there being no further business tonight, the meeting is adjourned at 8:28 p.m. Have a great night.